Students of the month, I should say it's an opportunity for our students to have access to information and their own experience as well. This is going to help me and we're going to call out each of our names and then we will take photos.
Tremont Baker, Browning Pierce, and Tremont's not here today, so we'll put that aside. Children's reading center charter school, Richard Reavis. Hillcrest Academy, Braden Smith. James A. Long Elementary, Finley Blitch. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Weston Des. I guess Weston's not here. Mellon Learning Center pre-2K, Caesar Medlock. I have Mellon Learning Center K through 12 here, but it's not announced. We don't know who that is. It's the mystery student from Mellon.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, we're going to get Deanna Mosley. That's next. Mosley Elementary School, Naomi Singleton. Panayo Baptist Academy, Aria Miller. Putnam Academy Vots and Sciences, Jaylin Green. Putnam Classical Academy, William Clock. Little Sprouts Learning Center, Isabella Donato. Okay, thank you. So we are going to take photos as we said. We're going to get the educators up here first who are the teachers and educators. We'll take them in.
Three, two, one. All right, take it down. One, two, three. All right.
Thank you. Okay. Students all here by the side.
Yeah.
Hold on to that seat. Say, come on back. You'll get individual pictures. Don't you care what seems to happen in a minute? And you guys, you know, you're going to do like all the time everything. So it's not like we all kind of come hard. Naomi's family. Naomi's family.
Yep, they're here. Do you want me to get a picture with your phone? Okay. Oh yeah, you're fine. I'm just kind of behind you. Mayor. Braden. That one. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
I must ask you, we did work on the system all day today. We're not being recorded right now, but I'm going to ask if you can all speak into your mics tonight. We have to make sure that one of my so.
Thank you.
I'm saying like this.
My chair.
I like this, not all away.
Mike take one.
Like chat.
Yes.
Okay.
We're meeting on eight eight twenty. Be called to watch.
Father, we give you thanks and we give you praise for your goodness towards us. We thank you because you have been so good all day long. We brought together once again, God, for the business at the city. We pray for your guidance, pray for your directions, pray for your instructions, and God give us wisdom. We need to know what to do, God, and how to do what, even in times like these. We pray that your will be done, your kingdom come. It is in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Is Mayor, I'll to approve the minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion second on favor. I'm going to start with prohead nominations, public recognitions, and presentations because of five. Historical preservation. When the historical preservation raises awareness for historic preservation during the month of May. Whereas the stock preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining character while enhancing livability. And this is strong preservation as relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Whereas the historic buildings, churches, and homes of the city placid help make us the unique and provide links with aspirations and attainment of the city's pioneers. Whereas the buildings constructed in the 19th, 20th century contribute to appreciation for our heritage. And we think it's important to celebrate the contribution that contributes that's made by dedicated individuals and helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us now. Now, these four, I am very proud. The city of Palatka together with members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025, Historic Preservation Month. The city placid and urge everyone in our community to participate in historic preservation efforts.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor? I thank you, any opposition? I will come on down, who is here from the historical side.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for recognizing Historic Preservation Month. I know. And not only preserving the beautiful, although that certainly draws people into our area and there's an appreciation for all. Appreciation for all, but also those things that are not as beautiful and we use as learning tools moving forward. So, thank you very much, and I do appreciate everyone from the Historical Society and Black and Main Street that came to accept this honor. Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Everybody knows that's the last time I want to close Palatka still in the state, but we should be proud of the history gone after that. Fire, please, officer of the mayor. Will you give us your name?
Gerald Dunley, commander of the Palatka Veterans of Foreign War Post 3349. We're here tonight to honor the Policeman and Fairman of the Year for the Veterans of Foreign War for Post 3349. My order master, Gerald Sholder, will do the presentation. We want to thank and appreciate all the fairmen and the policemen for the great duty to our community. Without them, we couldn't survive and continue on on our great commission. I will now turn it over to Gerald Sholder.
Thanks, Commander. Mayor, Commissioners, pleasure to be here again this year. Every year we look forward to this. Let's give out the fire department. Firefighter of the Year Award first, Engineer Marcus Wilson. Thanks very much. Chief Thaler's back here. I'm going to read his letter that he wrote to us so that now everybody can hear exactly what Engineer Marcus Wilson is recognized for. Engineer Wilson joined our department in October of 2020. He's shown great desire to achieve more and more with our department. He's helped prepare our newest firefighters for the career ahead. His ability to teach others what he knows lays the foundation for our new recruits. Engineer Wilson has helped teach Georgia Pacific and Seminole Electric classes for special operations. Spending time getting to know the hazards in these facilities and the personnel who run those processes that we may respond on any given day. Wilson's life experience and construction background adds much to his abilities and ideas for the department to consider. Marcus is a self-starter and is motivated to get better at his job to ensure others do as well. Wilson has been a leader for hazardous materials response and training, attending several specialized classes, taking the time and energy to move our team forward. Marcus is known as a good firefighter and a team player. His reliability and his commitment to the department shows as he stands, as he signs up for standby missions, hurricane deployments, and teaching, just to name a few of the contributions that Engineer Wilson has made to our team. Wilson's team respects Wilson as a teacher, a leader, and a colleague. We appreciate the opportunity to recognize the dedicated employees who make up the city of Palatka Fire Department. The VFW has enabled our responders to be recognized by a loyal and committed organization that represents total commitment to our community and to our country. The VFW has positioned itself to be a positive force for good in the city of Palatka. We thank you for your service, and to all, we thank Engineer Wilson for joining and bettering our team. Thank you, Engineer Wilson.
Come on, guys. Come on, guys, don't be shy.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three.
I don't think anybody's going now.
Congratulations.
We had the Policeman of the Year. And we got Chief Shaw here. And we got Mr. Newcomb here. So we're going to do, we're actually going to. Officer Dixon could not be here with us tonight. But we are, we're going to read the award for it, and then we'll go present that to him tomorrow at the police station so he gets it from our hands. But here is the write-up for Matthew Dickerson. The command staff of Palatka Police Department would like to nominate Officer Dixon for the selection of the Veterans Foreign Officer of the Year. Officer Dixon has been employed with the Palatka Police Department for a year and during that time has served this community in a positive light. Officer Dickerson has proven time and time again, he is dependable and is willing to give of himself without question. Officer Dickerson has grown into a productive member of this police department and continues to be a positive presence at community events, which assist the department with bridging the gap with the citizens of Palatka. Officer Dickerson possesses an easygoing outlook and demeanor while at the same time having the ability to work harder than his counterparts. Officer Dickerson's hard work and dedication is evident on a daily basis, and it has quickly gained the attention of the citizens of Palatka. Officer Dixon's ability to multitask is remarkable and proves it is possible to be efficient while juggling several agendas at the same time. His ability to positively affect individuals he encounters has led to the successful completion of these and other criminal investigations. His willingness to go above and beyond, combined with his ability to blend as a team member, has proven to be contagious. Those that have the opportunity to work with Officer Dickerson often report that he makes the difficult aspects of law enforcement seem simple. It is without a doubt that Officer Dickerson's devotion, sacrifice, and attention to detail make all the difference. His professionalism and team support truly reflects his work ethic and drive towards law enforcement. Officer Dickerson is truly an asset to our team, and for this reason, we would like to recognize him for the Veterans of Foreign Wars Officer of the Year. Thank you, Chief Shaw. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me announce that on May 26, at 10 o'clock in the morning, we're going to have the Memorial Day Parade from 11th Street to the riverfront. Anybody that wants to be in the parade, we've got a pretty good lineup going right now. The, we're going to have a ceremony afterwards down at the riverfront like we do every year. We want to thank the city for giving us the street and the time and the place that we can do this. It's a great honor for our fallen veterans that we can honor them on this great day. After the parade and after the ceremony, the American Legion Burgharts Post 45 will have an open house as well as the Veterans of Foreign War Post 3349, open to the public. So you're invited. If anybody has any questions, my number's in the paper. I'm the commander of the VFW, you can call and I'll get back to you. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Downtown Strategic Action Plan, is Ms. Dietrich here?
I'm up here, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can.
All right, am I loud enough or do I need to speak louder?
You're quite well.
Yeah, you're doing fine.
All right, I know I have five minutes, so bear with me and I'm going to move quickly. So before we get started on the agenda item at hand, I wanted to bring you up to speed on what has occurred since the grant was actually contracted with us. So I'm Laura Dietrich, I'm the project manager, I'm a senior PM and planner with half associates. And I've been working with the mayor, the commission, Ms. Cardy, Kristen Odom, and several staff members to do this. So this culminated with the city being awarded a CPTA or Community Planning Technical Advisory Grant. It was designed and submitted and awarded based on four deliverables. The first deliverable was based on a workshop to kick off with the community and discuss strategic things and take all their feedback to prioritize what would be in this plan for the next five years. That was held on November 19th. While the city did follow all of their protocol in advertising that through four or five different mechanisms between newspaper, emails, social media, it was somehow confusing with the community. So we only had 10 attendees. So we went ahead and not only held that workshop for several hours and gained a lot of great discussion and feedback, but then we re-advertised and held a second kickoff community meeting anyway because we wanted to make sure we got as many participants as possible. That second meeting was held on December 3rd. We had, I believe, 37 participants and we had several good hours of interaction, a lot of feedback on items. And I purposely did not share at that meeting the discussion points from the first one because I didn't want it to be misled or pre-led or in any way kind of given ahead what the discussion points would be, just in case. So I kept all of the notes, of course, from both workshops and what flushed out was the fact that the priorities were very clear because the community's feedback was very poignant on several things, which we'll go into in just a moment. So with that, the first deliverable had been concluded by December 3rd. That was the culmination of the notes, the minutes. And then we produced a survey in which the citizens that attended took away with them or left behind with their answers. We posted it on the city's website for two and a half months and several times did an email blast to bring people's attention to the fact that the survey was still up. After about two and a half months of that being posted, we gathered the results from those surveys and combined those separately though, so we can attest to workshop comments versus survey comments. That's the first deliverable that was culminated before the end of December of 2024. The second deliverable is for a market analysis, which we worked on and delivered that to staff and the state at Florida Commerce by February 28th of 2025. That is in your possession, Madam Mayor and Commissioners and staff. Tonight, we're talking about the five-year Strategic Action Plan, which is not supposed to be a visioning of anything and everything. It's supposed to be something that's actually implementable, something that's reasonable, that's realistic, and something that's a priority. So while there were numerous things listed in the scope of the grant that was written by staff at the time that's no longer with the city, we did attend to all 17 of those items and we gave you strategies on how to continue on some and how to embark on others. Because you do have your CRA action plan for the Central Business District, which has ongoing reports annually talking about what has concluded, what's been completed, what is pending, and what is to be put forth in the next several years as a next item or something in your capital improvement plan. So if you'll assist me, Kristen, we've got the five-year Downtown Strategic Action Plan before you right now. So we're going to roll through this very quickly. So there are 17 items that were put on the scope for the contract. I looked through those and we decided that they really fit well into four buckets. And those buckets are public involvement, the community toolbox, economic development, and placemaking. Next. So the intent again of this grant was not to have buckshot into every direction so that way you could try to achieve 23 things in five years, which is not feasible. It was to do two things. One, respond to what the grant's directive said in the scope, which was 17 different items with regards to what I just read off in those four buckets. But I also felt that what we really need to do is after we go through those 17 different things combined in those four buckets, what really was the strongest intent and strongest passion from the community, from the business owners, from the property owners, and from you, the body of the commission? So go into next page. So placemaking being the first bucket, some of those items that we discussed in the scope with regards to connectivity and walkability. You'll see that in this document that you have possession of, you can look at later when you have more time, there are workshop comments and then there are survey comments. And then there are listed strategies that speak to things that you may already be underway and working on or some things that may have been completed in some areas, some segments, but still need more attention. So you can look at those because they're 17, so we're going to roll through these. So that's placemaking's bucket. As we go through, there's connectivity and walkability. Next. Landscape and streetscaping. Public art. Historic preservation. And wayfinding. And transportation and parking. So that's bucket number one with regards to placemaking. Bucket number two, we combine several things into what we refer to as economic development. That can be special events and promotion branding of the Central Business District, whether it's merchants, festivals, or what have you. So again, you'll have the comments from surveys, workshops, and then very specific strategies to address those. So special events and promotions, one of them, next. Messaging and branding. Retail and restaurant recruitment. Backfilling vacancies. Real estate analysis. Supporting entrepreneurs. Catalyst projects. Next one. Okay, and then bucket three is the community toolbox. That speaks to things as incentives and financial tools. Zoning codes. Well, frankly, it shouldn't be zoning and codes. That was the text in the contract in the scope, so we had to keep it as it was stated. What that really should say is the comprehensive plans, goals, objectives, and policies and the land development regulations and the ordinance code. And then there's ordinances and policies. And then bucket number four is public involvement. So that's identifying partnerships. That's community input and survey results. And that leads us to the five action items. So the five action items basically culminated because of input from the community and looking through all of the storyboards that we were taking notes on, as well as the surveys and input, it was very, very clear what those five things should be. And we felt that it was reasonable for you, while five years may sound like a long time, five years goes by very quickly. Plus, in order to implement five things, they have to be financially feasible too. There has to be realistic ways for not only the Central Business District's Tax Increment Finance Trust Fund to contribute, but also layering that through other grant opportunities. So if you'll go to the five. These are in order of, all five are very important. They just are all different types of things, so that way they're doable. Some are brick and mortar and some are intangible. So without a shadow of a doubt, the most important thing, hands down, from everyone was the branding and promotional campaigning on a constant and regular basis about the City of Palatka. Now, that being said, this is the Central Business District, which is the kind of ground zero for the walkable, you know, heart of the main street town area. However, it is bookended by two other CRAs and it's within the City of Palatka. So the City of Palatka's branding should be a messaging that is put out not just throughout the region, but the state and the southeastern. So I think it's absolutely necessary in our recommendations to you that there be a line item in regular funding, not only in the CRA, the CBD TIF to contribute, but to couple that with city funds for the branding and the campaigning and the promotion of Palatka as a city, as a town, period. And it should be all the time, not just during Christmas, not just during a fishing tournament, not during just the Azalea tournament. It needs to be something that is a constant flow. And it needs to be done by an outside professional organization that again can be funded partially by the TIF, but also coupled with the other TIFs that are bookended in the North and the South Historic Districts, as well as the City of Palatka's. Now, we did work with the County Chamber and Economic Development to have discussions. And when we did the marketing analysis, we looked at comparable data to make sure that we were all in line with how the message and the marketing data and what that ring would be, what that radial area would be. So for market analysis, it's a 90-minute drive. That is consistent with how chambers and economic development brand and look at things within their closest proximity. However, for branding, it has to be at minimum regionally and statewide. I think once you start to get, you know, your work going with the campaigning and the branding, I think then you need to start reaching out into the southeastern United States, start hitting Georgia, start hitting Louisiana, start hitting South Carolina, North Carolina, because these folks are traveling here and they're driving right by you. And they're then turning around and going home and they just don't know any better and they would love to be here. So that's number one. Number two, again unanimously was code enforcement. And the city, I'm so proud of you all, you already acted on this. You've already used some of your TIF dollars and coupled it with city efforts to have all three CRAs employed now and staffed with full-time and part-time officers and code enforcement. Number three is the Port Consolidated, that's the brick and mortar, that's the big lift. So that is a five-year project from start to finish, hopefully, because you've already started off with your environmental due diligence and starting to get that underway, get your arms around the studies that came with the building, I believe from Mr. Douglas that initiated that. So that's good that that's been moving forward. Now, the next step for that Port Consolidated site will be doing feasibility and due diligence reporting to be able to sit down and look at what is the best use for the site. And I don't mean highest and best necessarily, I mean, what is the best use for this site that's going to give this biggest return to the city and the Central Business District? Because this is in the CRA. This is currently a city-owned business or property, which is not generating any abhorrent taxes. And most likely, the best use for that would be something that's going to contribute back to the TIF and be a contributor as it's on the gateway. You already have one side of the gateway from the east coming into town. However, that Port Consolidated will really lock in that gateway, that entry experience for you. Number four is shared parking agreements. Now, shared parking, period, has been an issue and folks have been talking about it for a long time. And there's been some very interesting discussion points and some very elaborate ones, like very tall and steep walkovers, which I don't see that being feasible, at least not at the gateway. However, there are a lot of businesses and properties that go dark and aren't open on weekends. And so it seems like a very realistic and reasonable and affordable way to at least start on looking at some of your ancillary satellite parking that kind of surround the Central Business District from the river to 11th and from your, you know, two blocks east, north and south of the Central Business District. Shared parking agreements are something that the city may want to look into. And number five is public information and education. This has been brought to light, actually Jane West had some great comments when she looked through this along with staff on some things that caused me to back up a little bit and look at some of these recommendations. And I think there was a great point made that the Putnam County's Building Department is who provides those permits. However, I know that you've had transitional staff with the city with planning and development. So I think we can always improve on providing education and information with the community, whether it's people that come to the city, to the offices, to the buildings, or whether it's providing, you know, some kind of quarterly workshops that maybe, you know, held a half an hour before your commission meeting that just touches upon some good, simple, fundamental information and maybe post some more things on your website, but again, sharing that information. So with that, that will lead us to our fourth deliverable, which is not due until May 29th, which wraps up the entire project. So what we are working on now that the city will have back in their hands by the 18th to the 19th is the final deliverable, which is called an implementation support. I call it a table, but it's like a checklist in a way. It's going to be, imagine an X-axis and a Y-axis. So basically, it's going to have these five strategic items that are very doable. One, you've already taken care of swiftly, but these other four are things that need to be focused on on a regular basis and things that will be ongoing for the next several years. So this will take you through, this is 2025 to 2030. And if you focus on these, you can accomplish these things. And they need to be, some of these need to be things that you do forever. I know the brick and mortar one, Port Consolidated, that's definitely something that can be attacked in the Strategic Action Plan. So that table is going to show all of the government. It's going to show all of the stakeholders, all of the property owners, business owners, because not every merchant is an owner of their business, or they are of their business, but maybe not the property, I apologize. So it's going to involve the community. And all of those different entities that are stakeholders from different positions that should all be working together are going to be listed in this table. And then it's going to cross-section or cross-walk you through what those items are and who would be accountable for that. Now, there's never going to be one group that's always responsible. This is always going to be a public-private partnership. But this is going to make it very discernible. It's going to be very intentional, very direct. There's not going to be any ambiguity to it. You're going to know exactly what's going on. And this is going to be a focused five-year program. In fact, we're already into five months of 2025. This is four and a half years now, the clock is ticking. And that document again will be in the staff's hands by next week. We will go through any edits of that and then this entire project will be wrapped up by May 29th. And then grant cycle starts again. So special session is going to conclude next week. I will actually be in Tallahassee working on some things. So they will not announce the next cycle as they do every year for the next round of Community Planning Technical Advisory Grants for the 26-27 cycle. But most likely, as usual, there are always some time at the end of June or beginning of July. So what we'd like to do is go ahead and write the scope and fee for the items that you want to address, whether it be branding, Port Consolidated, or both. You can submit, you won two last year, so why not? So that's where we are now and that's the goal and intention for the next two months.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich. Any questions quickly because we're well over 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, y'all.
We would like to introduce, if I may, Mayor.
Okay, Shaw.
Palatka Housing Authority.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Casey Oche Bridgeford.
Hello, thank you, thank you. Greetings to the mayor, greetings to the commission. I'm here with the Palatka Housing Authority, my name is Oche Bridgeford. And I'm happy to be here because this is my first time being able to speak to the commission as a body. I've had an opportunity to speak to individual commissioners and some commissioners I still look forward to that. I've had an opportunity to speak to individual commissioners and some commissioners I still look forward to the opportunity, uh, to speak to. But from the Palaca Housing Authority, the biggest thing that we want to make sure that people understand is that we are here. We are committed to investing in more than just bricks and sticks. We are, are really invested and committed to investing in lives. And so as the, as the CEO of the Palaca Housing Authority, it's very important for us as a community to work together. And we noticed that as an agency, we haven't done the best job, um, historically in working with other institutions and other bodies and we are open for business.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bridgeford?
I'm just, I'm just thinking for coming to, um, speak to us as a body, but again, I had an opportunity to speak with him and, uh.
I have also, but thank you for coming and.
Well, he, he, he does have some, um, very good ideas for the, the, the relationship that he can build with us. Thanks.
And we have met with him as well, the city manager themselves, and we're looking at working together collaboratively. Affordable housing is one of our projects. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Commissioner James.
And I look forward to meeting you as well.
Absolutely, I look forward to it as well. Thank you.
Commissioner James.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
Relationship building and it's, uh, this is late to homes right now. I know that Palaca Housing Authority has some units that they were to. Or Putnam County, um, once they remove the high-rise building here. But as a liaison personnel was born, um, as we address the homeless population that we have now. I would like to know, have you looked into any of the forecasting of building those units by partnering with the city of Palaca, the county of Putnam and maybe obtain land and build those units that, like thirty-six units, uh, or you could speak on that with us?
Yes, what we have is what is called, excuse me. Fair cloth unit, uh, fair cloth limit, which means that there is a certain number of public housing units that every housing agency in the country has a limit. Because we tore down the high-rise in downtown, we have, uh, built thirty-six units, which are, um, at the NEM Spells Community Development. And then we have roughly around sixty that are left that we can build up. That can be something that we can look at, uh, homelessness. We serve low-income individuals all the way from homelessness, uh, all the way to mid-income individuals. And so for us, we are committed to it, but our commitment has to be tempered by the resources that are available for us to do so. And so the desire is there, the commitment is there, but we also have to do it in partnership with the community and making sure we're addressing the right, uh, funds that will allow us to actually bring this to fruition.
So with that, with that program that we have now, you see an opportunity where the housing authority can actually come in with our new, how, excuse me, our new population that we're trying to actually, uh, help with homeownership and that those, those people that you're talking about now are in that group. Some homeless, some have been displaced, so that's a cause homelessness when a person is displaced for whatever reason. And I just would like to see that partnership happen and I, I haven't seen the collaboration as of yet. But that is what I would love to see, uh, your agency work along with our agency and the agency that we actually, uh, are partnering out of state towns.
Absolutely, that, that is something that we're very interested in. We, we have a big job ahead of us. One is our communities need investment, they suffer from disinvestment for year upon year. So we are looking at ways to redevelop the, the communities that we already have. But ultimately, we got to put more units on the street. We have to build more housing across the spectrum, but especially to those who are homeless and low income.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I think something came to mind when talked about the fair claw. Well, was, I thought I read something in your, uh, I guess in the, uh, contract or whatever that you have with the city of, when you do the five-year plan. I think it's somewhere within there, I think it was a ten percent, was it a ten percent, uh, number of units in total that you normally have for people who are considered homeless?
So we, we have a number, I, I'm not as familiar with that, uh, the ten percent that you speak about and that's something that I can definitely research. But for us as a housing authority, there are a number of different ways that we receive our funding from, from the federal government. And there are specific allotments for building, uh, homeless housing. And those are allotments that we historically have not tapped into. So therefore, we have never produced it because it's this online item. But moving and to understand the national context, that funding source that I'm speaking about has been wiped out. So when we talk about building, now we have to look at new funding sources and new strategies for us to be able to actually fund those developments.
Thank you.
Sure, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, question? Thank you so much, Mr. Bridgeford.
Thank you.
City Manager and Administrative Report, what have you kind of limited these to five minutes as well? Yeah. Palaca Budget Preparation Council.
Our Finance Director, Mr. Peter Karyokas, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, um, according to best practices on GFOA, extinguish budget presentation award, we need to prepare the budget calendar, the roadmap or a plan for the next year. Budget preparation is that time of the year, we are already starting to the next year. And I prepared this budget calendar for you to review and, uh, maybe approve. And, um, there are some notable dates there, especially a couple of dates in June, uh, for budget workshops. Uh, one date in July on the tenth, for the budget workshop and two in August, uh, again for a commission workshop for budget. And also September has a couple of days that we're going to, you know, discuss and approve budget. There's two readings on the budget, that's it. I also sent you, uh, I think last week I sent you the, uh, commission initiatives in, in an email, which is based on, uh, prior year initiatives, uh, which was public safety, infrastructure, affordable housing and et cetera. So, um, if you can respond to me by the end of the May, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.
Um, I, I did notice on the calendar and I don't know if everybody else has had an opportunity to see this, but June six is a Friday.
Yes.
And the twentieth and the commission, the, the, I guess, the general fund workshop starts at sixteen P M. Could be here a while, so just, is it okay with that? Prepare to do that.
I mean, I, I did, I did ask the clerk when the, the meetings are scheduled, so I.
I don't, I don't know how everybody else feels. Your company, but.
That's noted, I will, uh, I will revise it maybe.
Send it back now. Yeah, please, please, please.
Thanks for your.
So much. There's one new thing to note, please, that, um, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, um, the July meeting, notice that we're going to make certain that nonprofits are involved.
Yes.
And making presentations, that's relatively new.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Investing in Impact, the citywide grants snapshot.
Daphne is our grants writer, grants administrative, administration.
All right. Hi, everybody. I am Daphne Brusso, she just introduced me. I am, I do my best to keep this at the five-minute mark, I promise. All right, so, um, investing in impact, it's going to be a high over-level, um, run-through of the grant snapshots to give y'all a little bit of information on what we've been doing. Okay, um, so strategic alignment. Right now, the grant initiatives that we're really trying to go after is modernization of infrastructure, disaster resilience, enrichment of parks and economic development. The strategic alignment is really helping to ensure our funding efforts are meaningful, measurable and mission-driven for the community. Funding diversity, so what has been happening in the previous years is that we repeatedly go after the same grants over and over, which is great if they're there, but we learned this year, some of them aren't going to be there anymore. So diversifying the grants portfolio has become critical to reduce our financial risk and maximize our funding opportunities. We're really getting into the foundation grants coupling with federal and state grants. All right, our impact forecast is looking to be about thirty million dollars. Obviously, it's spread out over multiple years, um, but that's a pretty good forecast. It's supporting forty-plus projects across city departments and it appears that we've kind of leveled off in twenty twenty-four from this bell curve we did twenty twenty on. So we're looking good, twenty twenty-five is going to be the year that we figure out if we're leveling up or if we are a threshold. Okay, the challenges we have identified. One of the biggest challenges we are having is that we are having infrastructure projects that are required to be multi-phase. Multi-phase because we are having to write in getting an engineer. One of the things that we've really been talking about and I know the city manager has been pushing. That is, I mean.
No, keep going. No, go ahead, keep going.
Um, so one of the things we've really been pushing is getting an engineer on staff because having this multi-phase project, it's causing us an extra eighteen to twenty-four months on these projects, trying to get the design build-out to go further. One of the other things we're running into is staff capacity. There's a lot of projects, not enough of us. And then critical needs, capital campaigns and funds, like the fire ladder truck, the master lift station. They are notoriously hard to get funded because they are so expensive and so expensive. So we're working hard to do that, but it has been a challenge. Okay, so looking forward, we really, really need to emphasize shovel-ready projects. This goes hand-in-hand with having your engineer in-house. They do this design plans before we even go for that funding so that when we get that money, it's shovel-ready to go. Focusing on resilience, also known as mitigation. That's one of the big things that we need to continue to do because our infrastructure is so old. And broadband infrastructure, there is a lot of money coming down the pipelines for broadband infrastructure. One of the things we don't have around here is buried lines, we need to bury our lines, that's what's going to do it. And expanding our regional inter-agency collaboration, one of the critical things that we have done and worked really hard to do is get a good relationship going with the county. We can't sneeze right now without our projects buddying up to the county because when you look at the city layout, it's almost like polka dot. Okay, so this is part two, I'll go through it really, really quickly. All right, current grant submissions. So right now, we are somewhere over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that have gone in. And it's diverse needs, it's everything from mitigation to first responder needs to mentorship. So we are really working hard to, each application really is supposed to represent and is representing a targeted alignment with our funding strategy and our community priorities. All right, infrastructure opportunities in the works. We got HMGP rolling up. We don't know if we'll have HMGP next year, they could choose not to fund it, so this is the year to go hard on it, in case it doesn't come back. Right now, we've got three areas of erosion, we've got Roddy Road, we've got Tierra Woods in the works. There's a couple of others that I really, really want to put forth. One of those, the three areas of flooding, I was going to do for Brick, Brick is now dead and it's not coming back. So we're going to figure out how to possibly get that done in HMGP. All right, opportunities in the works that are not infrastructure. So this is everything from fire department, um, community affairs. We've got technology, data, community data centers, um, and sports lighting for, you know, our kids leagues. And are recently awarded. All right, so, um, we recently got the vulnerability assessment, four hundred thousand dollars, it's actually really cool. It's to assess critical infrastructure and critical areas that are prone to flooding so that we can make a plan to stop that in its tracks. All right, so on the horizon, this is all in the R and D phase, research and development. If they fit with our funding strategy, we will go forth and put it forth, if it does not, it'll die. And this is my project's funding list, my high priority projects, stormwater lining, master lift stage, ladder truck, fire hydrant, planning and zoning ordinance and regulations, um, and expansion projects, sanitary sewer, potable. That's what we have going on already that we want to continue to focus on. Um, and then other random projects that are on the list that I am actively looking for funding for. Okay, so the next part of it, we're not going to go through, it really was just for your, um, you know, reading pleasure. But does anybody have questions?
Anybody have any questions, thank you, great presentation.
Yes, I do. Before you go, let's go back a little bit, it didn't go rapidly. So when you go back to your list again. Go. Go forward. He starts saying high priority and we did that. And I know of some of these, uh, projects, most of them. But when we start talking about, um, the priorities and what's first, that thought we had on there. I love storm waterline and, um, portable water. But those roads and the infrastructure projects that we had, and I see that almost at the bottom of this list has other projects. But I don't think that's other project, I think that's the way we should try to, we should try to find funding for our roads in the city of Palaca. That's throughout the city, entire city, I'm not talking about one particular area, we have some road problems that we really need to address. That, uh, and more sooner than later, and I think it should be on a product list a little higher. You mentioned about how we're going to do the HMGP stuff. Uh, I was told that the county actually had, uh, loss mitigation money that they were actually sending back. And they, they didn't utilize that money, I don't know if you were familiar with it or not. But I would like to, you know, you started talking about collaboration with the county and I know we talked about it, about the road project. I'm still a little limbo about the knowledge of, we're receiving a grant that's going out in the county and it's not being concentrated by the city of Palaca, I know we have water lines going up. But how do we end up? With whatever funding going out there.
So it's not going to be the majority of funding, their original plan that they put forth on Roddy Road would actually cost us more out of pocket. So they were going to do the entire design plan, instead of burying our line, they were going to secure it. Once they invoiced us for the entire amount of that, it would have been more than what our twenty-five percent share is going to be with this grant. So we've taken that piece away from them so that we can bury the line and actually be cost-efficient.
So they buried the line, we don't have anything to do with the road at all, we just want to secure the line.
Yep.
And if I, if I may add, today we just received the design drawing. So we actually have an idea today of the possible cost. However, we're also asking that same engineer to look at other alternatives. He assured us that within a week, he will send us some other alternatives that he just found out about also today. So we're doing everything as, uh, Miss Daphne has pointed out to try to address the cost concern only to protect truly our interests.
I got that. So what, my, my, my main concern is, as we receive that money, could that money also be utilized in other areas? We're receiving the three hundred and ten thousand, right, and only, help me understand, are we just giving the?
That's an application, right? Yeah, that's just an application.
These are applications we're putting forth.
Right.
So assuming that we get it, it will be used on that one project.
Right, so, other, we're talking about other areas that's flooding. Same grant that could take care of. Same grant that could take care of the flooding areas.
So I have a contingency plan rolling with three areas of erosion. I really want to move with Krill under the railroad thirteenth and fourteenth. And the furniture lot at Kirby. I have a lot more that will not take, feel, take a lot longer to explain to you. Actually, Peter and I went looking at that today. But we found one of the root causes on what is causing Krill thirteenth and fourteenth. First street, um, and the issues on Kirby that I want to address. Possibly through that three areas of erosion.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. Are we looking at other areas to concentrate? And I appreciate you going back and taking time. We're pretty rapid with what I have as question. And I thank you.
One more for you, your roads. Um, so that's really something I'm looking to wrap into projects on top. As the finishing cherry. So when we're doing something underneath the road, like a stormwater like sewer. We're going to get the road done on top as the cherry, instead of just repaving roads by itself. It makes no sense.
Right, I, I, I get that because also. You mentioned about engineer, the cost of engineer, uh. I'm really a proponent of having engineers now because we did some work downtown. On those roads and. I think that, uh, I call the insurance pay on us. Because those roads are still bad, you know, we spent a lot of money. And I would like to see, not only. As I asked about the Roddy Road, and you just mentioned, we're considering, we'll see what we actually getting. I would like, you guys bring those projects up here. I would like to see what we're expecting. What we should expect out of the project, because. It looks fine saying, oh, we're going to do this, but we don't know what we're going to even expect. Then we get a, a product like we have on some other, I said, does have new road. I think you should be able to go to someone and say, you messed up.
I agree with you. Here becomes the issue with that though. We don't have an engineer in house to do those design plans. We have to wait until we get the award. To then go into that design phase for them to give us that drawing you want to see. Hence the issue, hence the extra eighteen to twenty-four months that we've been saving.
Working backwards, so we need to fix that.
Smarter, not harder.
Yes, um, but thank you for talking about the smarter about the not harder, but, um, we, we had that problem solved back in twenty twenty-two. Honestly, we, we, we budgeted for a professional engineer. It was in the budget. It were proven it. It did carry forward with. Freedom Management didn't hire a person. Uh, saying that it took too long to get. A professional engineer, they wouldn't, and so they downgraded the position. To a project manager. And this is what we're seeing throughout our city. From twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to, to present, and we're still fighting this thing. Twenty twenty-four, we bought the money up to a hundred thousand. And we still, they say we couldn't get an engineer. So. What we, we, we're willing to go up to what number we're getting one. We can't keep, we can't keep getting. Going less than our requirements. And you're seeing it in the work throughout the, the work throughout our city. Just a few, few thousand dollars. Um, eighteen to twenty-four months projects to like. In combination with, I don't want to keep beating the dead horse, but we, we got to fix this.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we need to look within whatever we have. Then we had, because if you look in the budget, it had project engineer. So we need to fill that position. Go back to the other projects up here, the other.
Like going down or up?
It's the other project, the one with the other, you had your.
One more.
The one with, you almost, it was almost finished.
The last one.
And then, you know, we, we covered the road projects, we covered some of the other things, so won't talk no more about those. Prior to Palanca. Why is that even on the list? What are we going to fund that for? That is. There's a public-private partnership that we already have a contract in with, uh, uh, that has been going since twenty twelve. We finished that thing several times. We should be getting funds from that project to our city. From the caution. So we should not fund nothing on that. We should be giving money back from the partnership. The boat is in operation. It doesn't matter, man, whether you want two or three. I understand that, but you, we, you're just saying one. We should be getting one of the one.
I didn't say that either. I just said one was an.
We should be receiving funds.
Please let me finish.
Uh, but we got a number of projects up here that we really need to continue to work towards. And they all need to tie in to our priorities. And, and exactly, so we need to make sure that whatsoever up here.
Tying to the, um.
The party, so we can make sure that this is a move forward, like we need it.
May I help respond? Okay, so basically just saying, uh, we have been pointing out since the new team has come on board. And all the work that Daphne and project manager now Peter. And myself, we are all coming to the same conclusion. That it would really help if we had the engineer on board, even to the point. That just recently this week, we made certain to start searching and human resources have given us information now. As to what the cost is today, which is higher than the hundred thousand. But it's still so, it, what, whatever it is, it is so much. Worthy for us to have that inside engineer. The project manager that we needed so desperately to get the grants project. You know, grants and projects rolling back in September when it was completely disbanded. Because there was no personnel in that department. So that project manager also is an engineer. However, has not completed everything to be a PE. So we desperately need to have, uh, a full engineer on staff.
The one last thing, they, 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 and go back to the Creo, under the Creo. When we, we got the monies to fix Creo underneath there, so we're having to go back and revisit that. That project again. So just how much, how much was that?
So that I don't know. We're currently around a couple of different ideas. The main, the main issue that backs up to Krill, and again. It's something that I really need to talk to y'all outside when I can show you the LiDAR from the Army Corps of Engineers. And I can show you all the research I got about it. Um, it really goes back to. The furniture factory and knocking out all of the drainage when they put that in, which has now basically messed up the natural topography. That, um, those areas drain down.
That's why, um, former commissioner, Leguizamo was talking about before something somewhere over in the area, right up underneath, uh. Where the drains are, and that's what she was talking about before. So we're having to continue to redo projects that we thought that we had completed. And we continue to pull up, so we got to do better.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, first of all, thank you, Daphne, for this really complete report. Um, it's very helpful and I want to say I'm hearing. That we, and I certainly fully support moving forward with an in-house engineer. So the case is clear. I can't speak on my fellow commissioners other than those who have spoken for themselves. But we have to do that, because I know we also have another project that is contingent. And it may be coming up later, so I don't want to get ahead of the agenda, that we need to discuss, uh. The falling wall is what I call it. To city at risk by not. And I'm grateful that we have an, um, a project manager who has an engineering degree. And hopefully can become certified, because that would further solidify, uh, success, succession banking and support. So, yeah, thank you very much. So again, the past, I think we have to come from a budgetary standpoint with time, once you have. To present to us about the cost, and we just move forward. We can't keep procrastinating.
Yes, finance director and I have already started.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, next, um.
Presentation for the Planning and Code Enforcement Department.
Uh, okay, Mr. Remfell, please come on.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm glad, uh, people sent to you an overview of the Planning Department and the Code Enforcement Department. Um, I have a lot of slides, but I promise you I'm going to try to keep it to the five minutes. And, um. So this presentation will cover a few viewpoints, uh, the Planning and Sporting Department personnel. Also an overview of what we do in the Planning Department. Uh, I want to give you a little bit of statistics about the NABRA application that we have reviewed, received in twenty twenty-four. And basically, I really want to update you about the major developments that are going on today in the city. There, then I want to talk about the Code Enforcement Department. The personnel, uh, the process and the procedure that we, that we follow in the code compliance. And also give you a little bit of statistic, and I think are very telling, you know, based on what we heard today on the CRA, uh, presentation. And also about the grant. Uh, and then I want to discuss a little bit about the focus and goals that we have for the department for the twenty twenty-five for this year. So basically, the Planning Department. Is comprised basically of four, four positions. It's the, the Planning Director. And two planners and the Planning Clerk. And you can see their names, uh. Myself being the Director, we have Ryan Nichols, who is Planner One. Brennan Brown, also Planner One, and Alice Romero, who is our Planning Clerk. About the Planning Department, uh, I'd like to start first with our missions. First, you know, uh, our mission statement is to maintain the quality of life in the community. And promote economic development through the implementation of the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations that we have in our. In the, in the, in the city. The main function of the Planning Department is to manage development. Development growth in the city according to the city comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. And as you know, all development applications that we receive in the city are measured against these two very important documents. Within this country, where I, I, I have a list here of the type of development applications that we review. As you can see, we review sign permit, future line use, amendments, rezoning. We do certificate of appropriateness for our two historic districts. Uh, we do site plan review and also building permit review for the county. Uh, we process annexation, we review lot split. The preliminary and final subdivision plots. Uh, we do a lot of zoning verification letters requests, and we also administer the business tax receipts. And one of the, one of the important issues that we have in the Planning Department is obviously is to update and maintain our comprehensive plan. We also work and we are the planning, uh, technician, if you, if you want to call it like that. That to the two, two boards that we serve. One is the Planning Board and the I want the story preservation board. Let me, let me just give you a little bit of statistics. That we have done in twenty twenty-four. We have processed fifty-two building permit applications and the inclusive variety of items. Like sheds, carport roof, single-family homes, new single-family homes, demolitions, uh, et cetera. Also, uh, we processed nineteen sign permit applications, sixty-nine zoning verification applications. With the thirty-one certificate of appropriateness, it includes new construction. State or repairs, renovation, both in, in the both, uh, historic district of the city. We have also prepared twenty-nine staff reports that went to the planning board, and this includes annexations. Uh, future line use and rezoning. Last year, we processed, uh, two final plots. Uh, two plan unit development, six future line use, map amendments, eight rezonings and six conditional uses. And, and I, I like, I'd like to go over some of the major developments that we have, uh, in progress today in the city. The total number of this development and they're listed here and I'm going to go one by one later on. But the total number of this development amounts to almost eight hundred dwelling units. It's not a very small number. This number is significant in many, in many aspects. First, that if you take these eight hundred dwelling units. And based on the number of how, the person per household in the city. This amounts to almost two thousand new residents to the city. It's, that represents about twenty percent of our current population. So it's major. This is just in the last two years. It's also important because, uh, it represents economic growth of the city, obviously. The ramification of the economic growth with this new development, but also increase our tax base, which is so important for the city. And I, I think it's a reflection also that, uh, Palaca is a desirable place to live and to invest. And I think, uh, this is just a development going on, but we have many more, uh, applications that are in the works. That we're going to increase even more what we have. And last, lastly, but not least, uh, the important aspect of this new development is that. These eight hundred units more or less will generate around five million dollars in impact fees. That will be used to offset the, the cost of the, our needs for infrastructure. So this is very important. So let me start with the, with the projects that are going on right now. Uh, Silver Bay. Is a one hundred plan restricted age residential development, community to develop. It's located along, uh, Old Wolf Road, just behind, uh, the hospital. And the dwelling units consist mainly of manufactured homes with recreational amenities. Uh, the developer will maintain the ownership of the land and really function just like a mall home. Mall home park. The project is way under construction. Uh, as you can see in the pictures. This shows, you know, some of the units already being placed on, on site. Uh, also the, the clubhouse is, right now is under construction. So this development is proceeding very, very rapidly. Next is the cottages. This is, um. It's a proposed, uh, I mean, it's a plan unit development. Price of a hundred ninety-four townhouse units. These are, this is a rental community. And although it has some delays in the implementation of this project, the construction. In part is due, you know, to the change of ownership of, uh, the development. However, you know, in the last few months and few weeks, uh. They have invested. A lot in infrastructure and the side preparation for the development. So we anticipate that it's going to continue. I know they're, they're talking, uh, with the county about getting the building permits. So I, this development is going to come through. Next is the Baglory Town Home Development. And this is a residential community of townhomes consisting of two hundred and forty-eight units for sale. And this is very important because this group that is developing this project, uh, as you can see, it already started. Uh, they, they're doing the site preparation and putting the infrastructure needed for the development. But this, this particular group is looking at maybe two. But this particular group is looking at maybe two other projects in the city of Palaca. And they chose to come here because of the reception that they had the first project. So that tells a lot to me. The Cypress Landing Townhouse, this is also a plan unit development comprising of sixty-eight dwelling units, also for sale. And as you can see in the picture, it was just recently in front of the City Commission, maybe two months ago, not even that, and already starting with the preparation, land clearing and some side preparation for the development. This is the Palaca Apartments Project. It consists of forty units, plan unit development. This is also a rental community. It's almost completion and the construction is almost complete. And we anticipate that probably in the next three months it's gonna open.
So that's annexed into the city as well?
That is in the city. Yes, it was annexed into the city, absolutely. But this is almost complete.
Yeah.
Next is the Moody Road Town Home Development. This is a hundred and twenty-eight townhome plan unit development. And right now it's going through the approval process. It went through the Development Review Committee. It went to the planning board, it has received a favorable view from the planning board, and it's coming to the City Commission probably next month. I included here, and this is the site, it's right behind the laws, you know, of Moody Road. And I wanted to do also just an example of a plot that we've been working. This is the Fairway Estates. The City Commission reviewed this not too long ago, which basically is just a subdivision of six plots for residential purposes. This plot was recorded this week, about two days ago. And the owners of the development, they're stating to me that next week they're gonna start pulling the building permits. We also have some examples, I wanted to do some examples of non-residential development. And this is, I'm sorry, this is the site for the plot, right there on Mosic Road. I included this, this is the Palaca Burger. This is the site of the old gas station, eight hundred St. Jones Avenue. It's a hundred and twenty-nine seats restaurant. It's under construction, finally. They're moving on and it's under construction, so anticipating the next few months, you know, that it will be open to the public. This is another project. This is in the one hundred block of St. Jones Avenue. This is the, it's called the St. Jones Avenue Hotel and Restaurant, and you're very familiar with the site. Actually, the intent of the developer, the owners is to include not just this one hundred block, but there are other properties adjacent to it that they want to incorporate and make it just one single development. But this is basically is a mixed-use type of development. On the first floor, they're proposing to have restaurants and a venue for an event venue, also a hotel on the second floor with a bar and a not a big hotel, it's about eight units, so. And they just, this is the site, as you know very well. Just in the last couple of weeks, they have started interior renovation, I mean demolition, preparing for the site development. So it's moving forward. This is just a little example also, you know, of small commercial development going on. This is on Tulsa Avenue on nineteen. It's a Julienne Restaurant. It's proposed to be a sixty-seat restaurant. And right now it's going through the building permit process with the county. Those are just the projects that I wanted to highlight to you, so you're aware of what's going on in the city. I know that in the past, you know, you have asked, you know, we approve all this project, but nothing's happening. Well, they are happening, and the amount of, the number of units is substantial. Also, the impact fee they're gonna generate is substantial, and we're gonna get more, I can guarantee you that. So let me move a little bit to the, I want to give you a brief overview of the Co-Enforcement. And let me just say that the primary function of the Co-Enforcement Department is the protection of the health, safety and welfare of the citizen, as well as protecting the community character of our neighborhoods and our commercial areas. That is the statement, the mission statement is to maintain and improve the quality of life of our citizens through fair, equal and resold oriented enforcement of our core ordinances. As you may know, the Co-Enforcement Department oversees building and property maintenance, sign violation, builders with no permits, businesses licenses, whether operated with or without. And also one of the functions they have is to prepare all the items that have to go to the magistrate. Right now, we have three officers. We have two recent hires, you know, in the last two months. And they're already been trained and they're already really working very, very well in the city. And I want to show you, afterward, I'm gonna show you a little bit of the, some data that I have from last year and this year. Let me go through the goals for 2025. As you may know, you know, the the co-compliance or enforcement department came under the planning department. And during this transition, we tried to focus, shift the focus of enforcement towards compliance. We think that compliance is the ultimate goal of the department is to make sure that the property are into compliance. So in keeping with that focus that we want to do with the department, we are proposing to change the name of the department from Co-Enforcement to Co-Compliance. And we're gonna bring this back to you during the budget process, you to make it official. Some of the goals that we have, and these are things that we're already doing, it's already in place. The conductance of community footwalks that our officers are doing. It basically is just to get familiar and establish a good relationship with the community and the neighbors. They're doing that walking the streets. Also working on ensuring that all vacant houses and businesses are registered with the property information in case of emergencies. And this is a very important, I think maybe it's a little bit of a change. When we receive a complaint right now for Co-Enforcement, we go to that site, but we don't just look at that site. We try to look at at least two blocks, so we make sure, you know, that we are looking equally to all the properties. And that thing is very, very important towards acceptance, you know, by the community. We're also working on a flex schedule. We want to work on the weekends, so right now we're rotating the staff to work on the weekends and also to work until six o'clock in the afternoon. This is already been implemented right now. I'm pretty sure, I don't know whether you're familiar with the procedures and the process that we go through with co-compliance, but this probably gives your brief summary of what we do and the timeframe that are involved with Co-Enforcement. And finally, I want to show you a little bit of the data that we have, just a comparison between the last year and what's going on this year. The first column is the total number of cases. As you can see, last year, it was almost two hundred cases. This year, we're about fifty. And as of this month of May. That shows, to me, shows that more property are coming to compliance and that the community is a little bit more aware of the issues, you know, that generates Co-Enforcement. So to me, that's a good reflection. The same thing with the magistrate cases. You see, last year, in 2024, we had about fifty cases brought to the magistrate. This year, getting to about twenty. Again, a sign, you know, that the compliance is working. The next columns are the cases in the community redevelopment area, in our CRAs. And if you can see, last year, it was about ten cases, maybe less. And this year, you can see, it's almost already up to about twenty. And this is because, you know, we have an officer and we pay much more attention to the CRA. And also because, you know, that new position that we have, Co-Enforcement, is funded by the CRA, fifty percent of the budget. And finally, the last column, the little one, shows the cases that we had regarding that city property. And if you can see, last year, it was about eight or ten cases. And this year is already about twenty. And what it is, is that we try to make sure, you know, that as we enforce our code in property owners and businesses, we do the same with the city. So hopefully, it's not gonna increase, but if it does, you know why. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I thank you for your time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for this awesome presentation. I do have a question. You know, it's great that we are increasing dwellings in the city. And I always want to ensure that we're coordinating the required public safety needs that increase accordingly. We always consider that, so I just want to state that on the record, I know we do. I just want them to know where we are as well.
Anybody else?
I just want to commend what one of our organs department has done. This is the most comprehensive report that we've ever had. This has heightened our appreciation. Thank you for that. I was already working to see how much property, how much of the city, some of our.
Yes.
Thank you, absolutely.
Fisher Jones?
Yeah, I did those comments that I also have a question as regards to squaring off the city and our boundaries. And I would like to know, or I would like to see here in the near future, plans to square off areas like the Roanoke Hills areas, where we have Spotted County-City right across the street from one another. And then we have Baileyville area, off of Twenty Street, right on Old Jacksonville Highway. You have one street. But west, and you were in the county. And then we jumped to Highway nineteen, went back to the city again. So I would like to see what type of planning we're putting together to incorporate that area. Because we're talking about eliminating seven. And we need to have a plan going for all of this development is great, and I'm excited about it. But also excited about the people that want and need our services and who are going on deaf ears, I hear it all the time when I go to churches or talk to the parts of people and say, well, why are we being oversubtle? It's like they've been looking, so we must address that and have a strategic plan to square those boundaries as well. Like Commissioner Ball, this is dope, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome. But I'm glad you bring it up, the issue about annexation, you know, how to square off. The city manager has already started the conversation with the county. And really, the venue to do this is to enter into an agreement with the county through the inter-local boundary service agreement, which basically is gonna, it's like a plan for annexation, where we're gonna delineate with the county, the areas are gonna be annexed into the city in the future, they're gonna happen right away or in the future, but at least we have a plan. And the biggest issue that you pointed out is, the biggest problem is that the liberal services, it's just not an effective way to deliver services. When you're in the city and then you, you know, some places is the county and it's the city on the other side. And it is an accident and emergency, we have to respond, they don't know sometimes, you know, which have to go because they're not sure, you know, who jurisdiction it is. So it is very important, and I hope that we can proceed, you know, and enter this agreement with the county. We have to initiate, the city has to initiate with the initiating resolution and then bring it to the county.
If I may add on to that, we have been doing a good amount of research. I would say the past two months extensively, even gone to the point as next week, we literally meet with the county to discuss this further. So we are working on this rapid diligently. We're looking at the various alternatives of how to achieve the goal. Because you can do it legisla-, oh, well, I don't want to get deep. I'm just letting you know that we are working on it as a team, several departments.
And I just learned just the other day, how far Palaca, three, two, three, four, goes. Way past West River Road, so Palaca spans way out. You know, in nineteen and all the rest, so that's gonna be important going forward.
We don't want that urban sprawl, so I think that's what we're working on.
We have the sort of boundaries, you know, we kind of do the passionate, the bounds should be beyond them, but not at the city limits.
Exactly.
That's key. Thank you for our time.
Thank you.
I also think we need to talk about the reality, five minutes, not enough time.
Oh, thank you, I wanted you to give us that, guys. Okay.
Because I think it's important, but I don't think allocating five minutes of sufficient reports like this.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so Commissioners, if I may?
You can go ahead.
Okay, we appreciate the fact that you realize that we do need a little more than five minutes. And we will start this valuable information that staff is putting together to help give you even more information so you can make better decisions, be more informed. That's our focus, so we understand that. My verbal is gonna be as quickly as I can do it, but mainly City Clerk, if you could put those pictures so they can see that St. Brian Park now have lights. So at night, you know, we're trying to make it more safer. We're on the finishing part of getting ready to open the bathroom. There will also be, you know, security and so forth without cameras and all of that. So we're doing everything we can understand to do to provide a safe park to the community. Public Works are also the new building. We're looking to start pretty soon with the new building where Public Works will begin to move some of their administrative activity to the new building. Also, in Fire Department, we have thirty new employees that have gone through citywide CPR training and AED, first aid, and we really appreciate Fire Department. Matter of fact, it was so successful that almost immediately we had an additional twenty that want to sign up. So that is our effort to have our employees more health-conscious. You know, if someone fell out or something, there's, many of us have now been trained in CPR. The Finance Department had a successful report, which you will discuss later very quickly. The agreed-upon procedures for the golf club, that has been completed. And we've reflected in this agenda, both Shaw Park and Pombo Parks are more than eighty percent complete.
Shaw Park, we know it, yeah, Shaw Park.
Okay, thanks for the assistance, everyone. But anyway, just want you to know that your efforts and having faith in your staff is going forward positively. We are working, we call each other, the nickname is not just Team Palaca, but also Supersars. And the reason why we call ourselves that, because we're trying to stay committed, reliable, passionate, you know, persistent, all of the things required to get things completed. Our legal department had a number of successes. The motion for summary was granted. It allowed us to now not be limited to five thousand dollars, but instead to whatever the value of the losses. Of the losses, the one that uh most successful was that forty six thousand, I believe. Uh, and also uh not having to pay attorney fees.
Yeah.
You know, to reduce the forty six thousand. Uh, the IT coordinator has started, we're in our infancy. Uh, with working, seeing how that's going to go, but we do have an IT coordinator at this point. And we are aggressively working today. We were working with ATT to get the cloud base going of. And I don't want to get into intricacies, but I just want you to know that progress is being made. The fact that even this meeting uh is being televised and the audio is a part of our IT coordinator working. With the contractor, reclamation, when Dixie lift station upgrade has been completed. The bio solid project is is actually started and moving. Uh, so that's good splash pack. We have begun, uh, as you know, we've been, we've been researching. Uh, we have received quotes, but more importantly, we're uh receiving community engagement. And I'd like to mention that today we actually have from the time we went out there on site, we now have more than seven hundred fifty. Responses to the survey. Uh, yesterday was up to six hundred ninety four, seventy percent, seventy point two percent. Approved the city moving forward and is excited about the splash part pad, so I'm just bringing that to you. Um, we are uh hopefully working with the Chamber, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce as we're moving forward with possibly. Uh, the twenty scholarships for small businesses and our effort to uh motivate economic development. In the city of Palaka. Thank you.
I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please be respectful and give due time. Speaking of their residence, we have some people that did fill out speaker pads, Ms. Duke.
Vicki Duke, Palaka, Florida. I my question deals with the stone wall. That's on River Street.
Yes.
That the concern about the safety there and the blocking off of that, and I wanted an update on where we are in. Looking at getting that corrected after, I think you had shared that there had been a survey and that property really does belong to the city. That the wall sits on. That's all.
Oh, I will give that.
No, no, so we're gonna do that later on.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Hello, Lilita Thomas, twenty four oh six Lee Terrace, Palaka, Florida. I'm just here um on behalf of Palaka Police Athletic League, just to share some upcoming activities that we have for our youth in the community. Um, so that everyone is aware. Um, we have a two week free camp. Um, it's called Pathways to Possibilities. I did provide flyers to the commissioner to the mayor. Um, this camp is being held June ninth to June twentieth from eight to one um at the Family Life Center. Um, so the deadline to register for this, um, is still open. Um, we did have a May first, but it's still open to our youth. Ages um ten to eighteen. Um, the next opportunity for our youth, um, each year, um, we do Camp High Ground. Um, Camp High Ground is a eight week summer camp program. The cost for the program is two hundred dollars um for the camp. However, for any, it does not include the field trips. Um, and we do have the fees for the field trip for a total cost for the camp and field trips. You're looking at a little over four hundred dollars. If the kids want to attend all of the field trips. And I do have additional flyers um available for um anyone who would like to have one. So just wanted to share those opportunities that's coming up for um the organization.
Thank you.
May I ask you, when the speaker is speaking, could you have the uh camera on that speaker? So.
Okay. That's okay. Ms. Pablo.
Glad we didn't fix that yet. More Pablo, uh, Palaka, Florida. I I came just to say thank you. The parking lot got pa- uh striped at the boat ramp and the marina and it looks phenomenal and thank you. Just thank you so much and really just to say thank you for staff and all the coordination and everybody working so hard and so diligently. And the incredible partnership and this, it's wonderful, just absolutely wonderful. So I just wanted to say thank you for a job well done. We just so appreciate you guys. Wolfson's uh Bass Tournament next weekend and you're knocking it out of the park, just one after another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any public comments that they want to express? Good comments?
Yes, um, uh, I would like to bring the project manager up.
Okay.
Uh, responding to the River Street wall place. The need for that in-house engineer, which we will come focus on it.
Good evening to everyone. Um, currently, um, the engineer and records working on the retaining wall, it's Hanson Associates. Um, they currently, they have done the survey already for the project and they're currently fin- finalizing um the design of the project. So hopefully in one or two weeks, we'll receive this this final design for the for the retaining wall. After that, um, we'll need to make make an emergency and to approve that because we need to go out to be, you know, that stuff. So it will take time to finish all that.
Right. Additionally, uh, meeting with Public Works, knowing that that liability is sitting there while we're still patiently waiting. For the engineer results. Uh, this week engineer has come up with the way to uh put something, we're gonna just put something against it. We we have to do something while we're waiting on engineering. So I just want the commissioners to know that we have already met and we're beginning to just come up with something to try to reduce the liability.
And we're gonna make the property owners aware that we're doing whatever we're doing.
Legal, make certain of that.
Thank you.
Didn't we already approve? We had already approved that, but when when we knew it was the the. The thing that potentially uh. And so when we just said, we had gave you approval to go ahead and move forward.
Yes, the approval when we brought it, uh, that approval for the hundred twenty one thousand was only the cost of the engineer.
That's true.
And so that's, so that is being done. We're only about a week away from receiving the design and strategy and so forth.
Whatever we need to do to move forward.
Yes, sir. Okay. And as it relates to Chamber of Commerce, uh, we just want to say thank you as well to Chamber because uh. Not only uh are we working together, the part that you see, we're also working together by uh innovativeness. Uh, with technology, uh, we are in the midst of cities, in the midst of um implementing fully the GIS system. And the different departments and we're grateful for the partnership as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The content agenda, any items to comment?
The D and F, just to kind of have a little bit of uh discussion around that, but not just hear from the. Uh, department. No, no real discussion or question on it, but just I just want to hear from the department that's putting this forward here, D and D and F.
Could you repeat which letter? I'm sorry.
D, D, E, N, F.
Oh, okay, D, D, N, F. Okay.
Anybody else? I was gonna pull E, but it's already.
Okay, we have um D, E, N, F called. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda with the exception of items D, E, and F.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Any opposition? Thank you. G, adopt recently point of five R sixty six for the father raising a children to be removed, county breeze AC.
So Commissioner Bo, do you have a specific question or you want me to just give you the breakdown of why that changes this there?
I just want to hear good news about what's happening over in.
Okay, okay, well.
We we continue to progress to make progress. We just like to hear.
Well.
Things has happened.
Well, I definitely wouldn't want to do that for you, but my slated presentation with next commission meeting because you know we have some long ones tonight.
You can pull that one in there during that time.
But I'm gonna go ahead. The uh, the AC units, the six units on top has already been completed. The additional cost came with the other six unit that surrounds the classrooms and the multipurpose room. Actually, the money is coming from the grant funded, because we took some money from the painting that we had allocated ninety five thousand for. And once we got the quotes, we were well abundant that, so we used that extra money to get those twenty seven, twenty seven thousand dollars to go to those new AC units. That's being built. Actually, they just finished putting in the ceiling towels, so if you come over now, it won't look like a scary voodoo. Uh, it's coming along. Uh, they are finishing up our parking lot. They've been paved. Uh, so things are coming along. Now we need to start working on the build out of the museum and other parts of the building that we got going. I just wanted to hear the good news.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
The gym floor gonna be last, but we all we got quotes and we got money allocated for it.
Sure does.
Okay, with that said, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there anybody here for public comments?
Saying I'm talking to public comment, all in favor? Thank you. E, twenty twenty five R sixty eight granting a special events permit to ancient city entertainment.
Well, uh, first of all, I like to say I had an awesome opportunity to visit every merchant on St. John's Avenue.
You didn't come to see me, sorry.
Most of the merchants on St. John's Avenue.
Okay.
Um, we did not. But with with Jessica today and it was amazing, we got really good feedback. From. The merchants. Uh, we also have some opportunities to address, which is why I wanted to pull this item as well. I do want direction as to should we let uh Ms. Cruz give her report first and then because I was maybe addressed.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Cruz.
Okay, are there any specific questions?
Let's just give you a report.
Well, I don't know if she has a real report or if she, okay, I think what she's asking was to.
So one of the issues that we have, which I think is really, really um important to address. Um, it came from specifically from the tax collector's office and a couple of other businesses. Is the request is asking for the city to close streets to some degree. Beginning on Wednesday night and Thursday, I believe. And so we need to clarify, um. Well, we need to make sure with whatever we approve that businesses are open and that citizens and customers. Are able to access those businesses. There is a an impending tax sale coming up. And according to the tax collector, this um that week will be a push. People will come in to pay taxes and we need to make sure streets are not closed and they have access on Thursday and Friday. So um that is one of the major concerns. Uh, another concern is confirming where the vendors will stop. For the Blue Crab Festival, there are some businesses, so we're disappointed with uh. Um, what we understand that vendors will stop on the fourth street. So they'll go from the riverfront to fourth street. And I know there's a new business, I think in the third in um block. Who really wanted to participate and those businesses and on those streets forward are concerned that there will not be. There will not, they won't have the flow for their businesses. So they definitely want, um.
Question.
No, I'm sorry.
Lady.
Lady wants to make sure because she wants to ensure that we can put signs or she has signs to say other businesses. But not trying to get advertisement to those businesses who are not in the direct way. Um, so those are. And and the permanent request goes up to eight.
Yeah. Well, on the application, it was initially eighth. Um, I had a conversation with Captain Orleans this afternoon and I guess he met with. Bennett prior to, um, and it's only going to the end of the four hundred.
Okay, okay, because that was again, another concern for businesses that to close it all the way up without vendors, what was the point?
Yeah, and um, and I do have a question, I believe, that would go to Attorney West. Um, just for clarification, um, there is one business. And I have his name.
Yes. Remedy?
Yes.
Was it remedy? Remedy.
Remedy stopping. And he did, does not want anyone in front of his building. He was not asked. And so again, just want to make sure we don't have any confusion regarding placement. Businesses may belong to what does that look like and it may be a conversation. So those are the key takeaways from our business today to merchants.
Okay, and and so we can make arrangements to not block the sidewalk in front of his business, but the street is the cities. And we will be putting that to boost on the street.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
I have a lot, but I I don't know what we can deal with and what we cannot, what comes with the territory, what we've inherited. With working with this um manager of the um festival. However, I do, and again, this is for Attorney West, the lack of response. We're hearing that over and over and over. Of the response to our city staff. It's just unacceptable.
And you will have an opportunity next year to use a different provider for your Blue Crab Festival. We are under contact with our cue music. Um, and these are all the strategies that we're agreeing to. We are very good to tops the term, but we will make it happen next year.
Thank you, and um I think we can make that happen.
Yes, because I've also had past musicians and vendors who have now been paying very late. That are pretty upset we have this too, so we really have to discuss this thing detail. For next year.
Um, thank you. And I do want to make sure that on the application. Where the requests began set up on the twenty first and twenty second and wrote over that we understand. Um. Who will be impacted, what that looks like, which roads will actually be closed. Will St. John's Avenue be open on Thursday?
Yes.
At what time?
Okay, yes, it will. Okay, it won't be closed until the evening time when all the businesses are already closed.
Can we summarize exactly the parameters, throw that, we can share that with the merchants? So the roads will close to four, five, I believe that is, and you know, that's only going to fourth street.
That's what we did today.
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I just think this is probably one of the worst uh coordination, not with, not with you guys, but with our entertainment. The entertainment group that is putting this on, we went well for the first three years and all of a sudden. You know, this is the one we gave, I think. Uh, we were given way more money uh than we've given in the past and we're getting a lot less out of it.
Yes, I've also had people concerned complaining about the lack of promotion of the event and then just not seeing. And that's been been watching my touches several times. With all that said, do we have a motion to approve?
We should approve that.
Well, it's uh, we we already agreed to the, unfortunately, we already agreed to everything previously and already she's gotten a good approval. To approve. We have a motion?
I have to.
Before you go ahead. It does not indicate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
What you're about to do today, so I want, I want to make.
I agree, I agree, you're right.
And so that's important and it. And so that's important and it need clarified because we're about to say yeah. Because here we have merchants saying they have a concern.
Now temporarily, we can actually make those scribble errors correct where you'd be able to be personally wrote into the contract saying the time. But right now, the soft closure leading up to five P M is what we had, so access of that road will still be there. But the hard closure will come out the business hours around five P M. But we can get that put into writing.
What is that setup looking like? This is what they're gonna set up, so. We just had that that one business, no, you can't be on the sidewalk, but you can be on the road, so we're gonna let it set up on the road those two days.
The event itself is on Friday, so it'd be soft closure and it'd be staging equipment so they can move into Friday to put it where they to be at. So uh Friday at the event, I can start at five P M on Friday. That's when the hard closure come in and the major equipment come in. Thursday will be staging the equipment in areas where they still give access to the roads as much as can.
So, okay, yes, is it possible? Again, go ahead.
It I'd like to modify my motion. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I move that we approve the request with the following conditions. That we um that do not conflict with the contract to our understanding. And that is that access to Saint John's Avenue will not be um stopped, so. For um Friday at five P M.
Second. You you finish with your motion? Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Public comment all in favor? Any opposition?
No.
Thank you.
That's what she said, up in five P M.
We don't make we don't make sure she knows.
I mean, I can't guarantee.
F is replacement of two primary sponge pumps. City clerk.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor of Commission. Um so a brief on this, these uh these pumps were the original pumps from when the plant was built in nineteen eighty-six. They had original life expectancy of twenty years. We've made them last thirty-nine years by rebuilding and maintenance. It's just to the point where it's no longer cost efficient to keep rebuilding these pumps. There's damage to the inside of the metal and the. The housings of that 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 nature. But it's just not economically feasible to keep pumping money into these pumps and they don't work as efficient as they used to. Um this was another capital project that we had put into our budget at the beginning of the year. We had asked for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We're coming in quite a bit lower than that that number. Um. That is the vault that it picked the the pumps rest in. Um we are asking for a sole source on this because we really can't change the configuration of the pumps where they sit. They're inside of that vault. There's the pumps on the right is the number two pump. Number on the left is where the uh number one pump usually sits. That's where the spot is for number one. That is another picture showing the damage to the concrete base plate. So this this money isn't just for the pump itself, it's for a pump, a a more efficient motor, a base plate. And new concrete supporting slab, which is all deteriorating and showing signs of cracking um after thirty-nine years of service. So it's just time to replace the whole setup, the pumps, the motor, the base and the concrete slab that it rests on. Um. The pipe in the middle is where it comes out of the concrete structure coming from the primary clarifier. Again, to change the style of pumps we have, we had to change the entire configuration, which is gonna ask add massive amounts of money to. Getting these things back on service.
Thank you.
So we're just asking that we uh are allowed to go with the sole source purchase of of these of these pumps. Um I think there's another picture showing the new pump.
Yep.
It's just a pump itself without the the motor and the base plates.
Yeah, we have it's pretty. Yeah. A little little purple, I think.
And what's your useful life on those pumps?
They basically basically rated about twenty years.
Twenty years, so you went a hundred percent over the useful life.
Yes, sir.
Man, and that's what we appreciate. The the community need to know these type things. The saving or critical infrastructure, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want, we just community.
I'll I'll forewarn you, next year's budget will ask for two more of the same thing for the grit. Same situation, thirty-nine years old, and these handle pretty abrasive material. It's the sand and the eggshells, the grittiest stuff that comes into our system. So they're very durable. Um but it's a very abrasive material that they're pumping.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. I don't think so. Thank you. We appreciate it. Move to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second. Is there anybody here for public? Item. All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Do you want to take a reset? No. Policy for funding non-market requests.
Well, it was a combined effort. Uh okay, legal and myself. Uh basically, last time uh you did see what we had put forth before. The uh some of the slight modifications would be uh specifying a a timeline so that it come. Come, it reconciles with our budgeting process. Uh for instance, that the deadline, the request for funding must be submitted. Between uh May fifteen to June thirtieth to be considered. Uh if anything comes after the budgeting period, that's under the deadline. It would be limited to fifteen hundred and they would have to really really clarify what happened. Why is it an emergency? But basically, everything is there. That was there before. Uh the reporting requirement, the dispersments, the use of the funds, the audit and oversight. Uh all of the controls are in place. Uh if there was um. There was one more thing that I think I would like to add in, and that would be uh that mandatory rotation cycle. So I think that's the one item that uh did not get written in. I'll make sure that that's put in. Mandatory recy- mandatory recycling means that we don't fund the same agency every year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that?
It's a combination.
Um.
Elite Brew Kitchens, Palatka, Florida. Uh I have the same con- uh concern. If in general, I like this, I think it's good. But my concern has to do with the eligibility criteria under paragraph one nonprofit status of one hundred percent for the nonprofit. That's wonderful. What I have a a concern about, which I voiced the last time, is the last paragraph, the last sentence in the first paragraph, it says. The city shall not consider consider funding requests from for-profit corporations. Well, that's great, or religious institutions. I believe that that violates the First Amendment of the Constitution that I think that's putting uh discrimination against religious concept institutions. Because they are nonprofit and they do help the community, and I think that should that part should be removed. I think it should say the city shall not consider funding requests. From non from for-profit corporations, period. And I request that the rest of the sentence or religious institutions be dropped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I mean, this this goes back to the the First Amendment issues of separation of church and state. Um however, it's fully acknowledged that religious organizations are do have non-profit status and they do. A lot of work within our community. Um so it it is within the discretion of the commission on how you want to handle that.
Any discussion? Want to just think about this?
Uh it's based on. Legal, I mean, cause I I I don't, I can't. I don't know about, you know. I just wanna do what's legal.
I can't do that, yes, yeah.
Okay, I want to feel. Um in running a nonprofit organization and dealing with some of this uh prior, what we ended up doing, because you can't. With the federal funds, proselytize or really spread the gospel. But a lot of religious. Nonprofit organizations do great work in the area of tutoring, dealing with the homeless. So maybe you could have the language restrict in terms of spreading the gospel or doing that aspect. And you wouldn't run into this whole thing with church and states separation.
I appreciate that. We will revise that small portion.
Okay, you'll bring it back to us, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
So I have a question. So. If you don't think that religious institutions. And the church. Request funding. Not being a follower of Christianity. Uh they don't. Probably not again. Any funding?
So I'll be honest with you, from a legal perspective, this landscape is shifting dramatically, as we speak. Um so and and that is why I I put it back to the discretion of the city commission. Because I will not indulge to give you a definitive answer as I was a year ago on separation of churches. Because that that is a different landscape for the US dream. Um so. In order to provide. Of the legal guidance, I am just not able to be able to.
Okay, but I I wanna make sure I understand um Commissioner Jones's question if. Because the requirement is that if you have a nonprofit status. So I believe, Commissioner Jones, and correct me if I'm wrong, that. Your comment or question was, if a church applies and they're not. A um nonprofit, then that is correct. They would not be eligible according to our guidelines. So I think that was the point Ms. Kittens was making. We we don't need the religious. That statement because it it the requirement is a five oh one three, one of the main criteria.
And as long as, again, I I appreciate Mr. Trumpfield's comment that perhaps if we specify what the funds can't can't use for, only can register or whatever.
Yes, agree.
Thank you.
So for-profit and not-for-profit on church or. Sorry, that's a question you're gonna have the.
Most of them.
Most of them are not.
Most of them are nonprofit.
That's so.
Rhetorical question is a question that you that, you know, Ms. Kitchen says just eliminate the language. But the language is in there for protection, so. But the question has got, you know, I think when we when we put it through the test, we ask these questions upfront. And and so you said. An institution that is not for profit. About what it is. And they ask for funding. We said, we put it there, it should be a five oh one three C. Uh. Some organizations haven't gotten to the point that the. Five oh one three C.
Yep.
But they want community, they want help from local government.
And they're not.
Sure, so.
And so you eliminated them off the back.
Yes, yes, we can modify the language to clarify that it's a not-for-profit corporation. Which would be their registered entity, which is a corporation, which is state of Florida. And not, as it said, was specified that they have to go that way.
I will want to see three.
That that, thank you. Okay, we'll make those changes.
That's where you were going?
That's that's where I was going from my head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we'll bring this back.
And one one I have one question. Now, my question would be if just because they meet that status, do. Do they have to already be like uh in business for. Or in operation for a period of time as opposed to, because if somebody just start up. Somebody just start up a five oh one um C three or nonprofit. And they got the application, they got approved, they're coming to you for money, never operated anything and coming to you for funds. How do you gonna know if they're gonna perform with uh any past history of performance? You don't have anything on on this organization, so. Uh I like to have at least, and that's what I've asked for in the Northeast Florida League of Cities. That we have at least two to three years people have performed and you got some kind of uh history. On these individuals in their organization.
Yeah, well, well, to the eligibility criteria, I'm allowed city attorneys.
Do have as part of the review and evaluation on um the tactical to a lot of the organization, but. Make that language a little bit more interesting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martha.
Questions, any discussion?
No.
Uh back to the collective.
Okay.
Peter Kayakas, Director of Finance. So as a part of uh city of Palatka Audits, uh we contracted with the H C. H C T, our auditors to do um. I've agreed to one procedures regarding the golf course uh to make sure that we have uh appropriate, correct amount of revenues coming into the city. And our auditors, H C T, certified public accountants uh and consultants, they issued um. A report stating that we have uh they they performed agreed to one procedures and we uh they didn't noted no. Any variances from uh our reports and uh reports that provided by the golf course. Um if you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Well, I missed I missed. I missed a uh portion of it. I do know. That from a past, I've been speaking with the city manager, but from a past report. There was some things that need to be. Looked down and addressed and be, I guess. Corrected or what have you. I wanna make sure that those things uh don't float off into.
Um are you are you referring to our expert? That's probably or no, or this is that just golf course? Because. This is.
No, no.
Yeah, this this is all it's independent, but they just they just looked at the golf course if we receive all the revenues contracted with our management companies.
Okay, that's different. That's different.
Yeah. And basically, uh the report is good.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, I'm I'm coming good with that.
So are we still on the golf course?
Yes, we are.
Yes, sir.
All the tyranny on that part still.
All just the golf course. This.
Well, yeah, that's what I was. We don't have these like pool and stuff like that. We don't the bar.
Recently, I did research on that.
Owned by a separate not-for-profit corporation, the Palacan Country Club Pool Association.
When that happened, yeah.
It was conveyed in nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight? Can can we get that back?
Yes, we can get.
Been that way a while, yeah.
But we. I know it's a matter of. But at the same time, um we've had this pool that was um built with. Twenty dollars, wasn't it?
No, it was not. It was uh the Palacan that's called. Nine thousand three hundred dollars in nineteen fifty-three. It was privately built.
But we have paid for some rings on that.
Not, it's been on, yeah.
Yeah, we just recently did this research.
We have not done any expenses toward the pool.
No, it's it's private membership base. They pay, they actually paid to build their own bathrooms at the. Just ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Now, I just want I just want to be clear on this because I get a lot of questions about it.
Sure.
Because it it is considered the Palacan Golf Club and uh uh golf course and pool is sitting there. And then you also have a bar in there and everything else. So when I say it's it's the city of Palatka. It's we are Palatka.
Yeah, it's.
So if we we need to put some other policy, except the pool.
Uh one of the things that we will be doing this year, thanks for the conversation, is uh the finance director. We're, in fact, we're meeting in the morning on uh some of the internal reviews that we will be conducting. One of which is the agreement for the clubhouse, because it is actually. one of which is the agreement for the clubhouse, because it is actually written in there, uh, some of the responsibilities, and so we're now following up on that as well.
Okay.
And that is why we had done the research on the pool.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. You know, we, but we, since we're on a pool, one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, the, the other pool that we. Yeah, that one we probably need to revisit, and then.
But we're, we're getting there.
The one that got covered up.
No, what?
So we just need to revisit that.
Now it's gone.
Let's call it, it's over. So, this, I did put in a request with the city manager.
Me too.
Okay, we have.
It's coming tomorrow, with.
Thank you.
Progress, progress.
Okay. Okay, we're on to public hearings. Ordinance twenty twenty-five eleven, diversion of business tax receipts for insurance companies and compliance with tort statutes, go five, go two, all four two, and surprise, read it.
And I don't know what happened to the staff report, but let me just walk you through this, it's, it's an extremely long ordinance, we do actually need to read the ordinance title there, so if you don't mind, if you could please read the entire.
Okay. You have had it.
I'm sorry, what?
He's a park dip.
Whichever your preference, because I don't need to be around.
I can, either one of us can read it, and runs of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending the Palatka municipal code from five sections, thirty-two fourteen vacant structure registration and thirty-two fifteen for closed, lighted, unsecured or abandoned structure registrations, and amending appendix A, schedule, the municipal code of the city of Palatka, there's a potential fees, and other charges related to chapter ten, alcohol beverages, chapter thirty, registration of naked, blind, unsecured or abandoned structures, chapter fifty parks and recreation, chapters for cleaning, chapters for. Times, chapter seventy-four subdivision, chapter seventy-eight taxation, chapter ninety-four zoning, providing for complex, certain, survivability, effective dating, strictness.
Thanks. Thank you, sorry, excellent job.
Uh, so very briefly, uh, it was brought to our attention, I, I've heard you, the citizens, that, uh, and for the increase, the G T R for insurance providers, and we were not going out to do that, and so this is probably that, we get the G T R twenty, back to twenty dollars. And, and, so it's in compliance with the state law and the restrictions that the G T R for insurance companies. And in addition, uh, the ordinance adds what should have been added a long time ago, under the zoning application of the kinds of the Palatka daily news, the applicant or any dangerous changes is responsible for the advertising fees. Um, we have a, a set amount that we charge, um, but then it's the applicant that is responsible for the ad. Based on, there's a continued, it's possible, you can't anticipate that, and it goes along with the budget.
Thank you, any questions? It's pretty clear.
Yeah. Nothing's without, if you go down to the orders seven eight and one seven zero, that's gives them, you go down to, what, six? Come on, slow the car operating sheet.
Right.
Why is that still existing in there if we don't buy legal?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where you're at.
Right, where the cursor is, right next to the cursor, yeah.
That's a, a good catch, um, and, and as we go through this, uh, for next, this budget now, where we're going to be doing a comprehensive clean-up, do you, do you have tried systematically to remove some of the old use, and we are not just happens with last year, we had a cobbler.
We need one, though.
We actually need, but. And we will be working on uh cleaning this up, so it's uh modern day, and. Great, thank you, Park, you're welcome.
Yeah, Paul. Okay, we have a motion? Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion a second, anybody here for public comment on this item? State, no, public comment, all in favor? All right, any opposition?
Thank you.
We're on to Commissioner's comment, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, um, I'd like to say to the city manager, thank you, I see the work that you're doing, and it's evidence in the staff.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I really appreciate your time and responses to requests and bringing clear and transparent information to the commission.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say that, um, we have a goal to increase the Girl Scout, um, troops in Palatka. As such, the um council from Jacksonville has, um, will be doing an informational session at Jacob's Middle School in the multipurpose room on June seventh, at two, from two thirty to four P M, there will be fun events, hands-on activities, and it's open to girls in grades K through twelve and their caregivers. In addition, we need troop leaders, no experience is necessary, the council will do all training and help us set up hopefully many troops in the city. And we have lines, please share that information, and we'll get it out in the community. But, that's all I have, the air thing, Commissioner Bora.
Yes, I just wanna uh take, great job, city manager, great job, staff, appreciate that, you guys do it every day. You guys are uh the uh backbone in the city, and we appreciate everything you do. Um, also condolences to uh the Campbell family, uh, for, for their loss, a loved one, and uh Commissioner Campbell as well, so just condolences to the family while they're going through this season brief.
Commissioner Charles. I have nothing as well, okay.
I, I would like to say, um, in transparency from the commission, one of our tasks is to do a ninety-day review for our city manager, and that is approaching, and so it is due by um May twenty-fifth, that is, on Friday, so uh, May twenty-sixth. So just wanted to put it out there, we are following it, just a reminder to our commission that we do have that.
Are you saying she gonna be here still around, uh, Porter?
We, we will determine that after the night, David, she'll be here by this time.
We just don't agree, no.
Thank you for the reminder, with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.